Hello, everyone. We're going to get started. My name is Ashley Winter and I'm a co-director of the Climate Action Collective and I will be one of the hosts of this evening's events.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dylan Gordon and I am the president of the Alpha Phi Omega Service Fraternity here on campus and I will be serving as your other co-host tonight.
Firstly, we want to take the time to thank the audience for their participation in this event. We would like to remind the audience to please be respectful of the candidates, their time, and the democratic process. Civil discourse and respectful exchange of ideas are an irreplaceable part of a free society. Interruptions will not be tolerated.
Thank you very much. And moving on, if each of our candidates, starting here at the end, would like to take a brief 60 seconds to introduce themselves to the audience.
Is that me first?
Yes.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Jen Penrose Akaris and I'm a -- sorry about that. I'm the city council candidate running in South District, so that represents wards five and six. I live on Bayview Street with my partner of 17 years, Michael, and my two very sweet kiddos, Mia and Emmeline, who are sitting in the front row there. I'm a public health researcher and a climate change and health researcher. I've been living here for about seven years. We moved here to root ourselves and raise our family. My mother-in-law is also here in the audience and my -- I get this question a lot. I am related to PoliSci professor Alex Akaris. He's my brother-in-law. And the original reason that we moved to Burlington actually was to be closer to him and to raise our families together. And, you know, the reason that I'm running right now is that I've got these two kiddos and I spend a lot of my time thinking about solutions to some of our biggest problems. And I think about the state of our world and the state of our city a lot. And I think right now is a really great time to lean in and to contribute to our community in any way that we can. And I think I've got some really good skills to bring to council and an ability to work well with all people.
Hi, I'm Kathy Alwell. I am a retired social worker. I have worked for many years with youth in this city, starting a youth center up in the New North End, which is now the Miller Center. I also have worked with kids in after-school, starting programs and getting the funding, the federal funding for all after-school programs, not helping get it. I didn't get it alone. With after-school programs and the federal funds for them, I also have three sons who have all grown up here and one who has moved back here and has his children here in the schools. We moved here, my husband and I, from Germany. He is German. And we moved here because this city seemed to me and to my husband as well that this was a place we could live in that was very close to what Germany was like, at least for the U.S. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Schacter. I'm running alongside Kathy for the East District City Council seat here in wards one and eight. I'm a mom of two incredible kids like Jen, who are a huge source of my inspiration for running there in first and third grade at the Sustainability Academy, where I co-chair the PTO. I work downtown at The Flynn, a very proud downtown employee, where I walk to work every day and really love to be a part of this community and care deeply about Burlington. I worked for about a decade in affordable housing and child welfare and I would be really honored to bring my skills and experience to serve all of you here in Burlington.
Great. Thank you so much. Kathy, would you just mind moving your water bottle slightly so CCTV can see you better?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate that brief introduction. So, the structure of this event will be 16 scripted questions, followed by the pattern of a social question, followed by an environmental question. And each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question.
Time permitting, we will try and get to some audience questions at the end. We've got forms just over to your left and your right. If you have any you'd like to submit, we will try to prioritize a good diversity of topics as best as we can. There will be no rebuttals in the middle of the panel, but each candidate will have two minutes to touch on any closing topics of their choosing at the end of the debate.
And now we are going to introduce our two co-moderators. Chris Brooks is a professor through Rubenstein and received his JD through the Vermont Law School in 2007.
And then David Delaney is a senior writing his thesis on Ukrainian history and is the president of the UVM Political Science Club.
Dave and Chris, would you like to get us started?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Dylan. Audience, candidates, thank you for being here. A brief note, we know it may be tempting to direct your answers to us, the moderators. We kindly ask that you direct your answers to the audience. And other than that, there are order for each question. There is an order and they are random, so we will make sure to hold to that. And we'll head right into it. Yes.
90 seconds.
90 seconds. It's a 90-second, 90 seconds. All right. Starting with Ally. Rates of homelessness in Burlington are at an all-time high. According to a report by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, published in December, Vermont now ranks fourth highest in the United States for number of unhoused people per capita. Much of the unhoused population in Vermont is located in Chittenden County. As a city councillor, how would you address this pressing humanitarian crisis? Would you like me to restate the question?
Yes.
I can restate the question.
And keep close to the mic because it echoes and I can't hear you.
Okay. Is this about right? Is this working?
Yeah.
This? Okay, excellent. Rates of homelessness in Burlington are at an all-time high. According to a report by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, published in December, Vermont now ranks fourth highest in the United States for the number of unhoused people per capita. Much of that unhoused population resides in Chittenden County. As a city councillor, how would you address this pressing humanitarian crisis? Starting with Ally.
Thanks so much for the question. It's, you know, I work downtown and it's really, I just almost every morning see people sleeping in the cold under the marquee. So, I feel so strongly that what's happening is absolutely a crisis and we have been seeing increasing numbers of homeless individuals in our community. I've spent a decade working in affordable housing and homelessness. I would be absolutely committed to figuring out, as the city council has been doing, how we can be adding more affordable housing to this community. The Housing Trust Fund is an important mechanism, as is some of our zoning ordinances and inclusionary zoning laws to make sure that we're adding affordable housing. We also just have a housing crisis in this community, no matter, like for everybody. We don't have enough housing inventory. So, really thinking creatively about where we can be utilizing all of the structures that we have in our community to add additional housing, to be fully utilizing every bedroom that exists in our community, and thinking about how to repurpose vacant buildings and home share opportunities, as well as really working to think about how can we have proper zoning laws and neighborhood codes and really be maximizing infill development, mixed-use developments to be adding more housing. This is also very much a state-level issue. So, something that I would be absolutely deeply committed to is working with our state-level delegation to make sure that we're advocating at the state level as well for significant policies that will improve the homeless situation in our state, which we feel most strongly here being the urban area of the state.
Ally. Jen?
So, in the United States, we often say that our goal is for people to own a home. And I, my philosophy is that everyone should have a home or shelter that meets their needs and that's just a really fundamental way that I see the world. So, I think in Burlington, this is obviously a housing crisis that is decades in the making. This is an issue that's larger than Burlington and, of course, has state-level elements of it as well. I support investing in the entire housing continuum, from low and no-barrier shelters to supportive housing, to rental units of various sizes, to private ownership as well. I think that we need more diverse housing options than what we currently have in Burlington because people have a lot of different needs at different stages of the life course. And I think that long-term affordability and even permanent affordability needs to be our north star guiding all of our planning right now. So, of course, I support inclusionary zoning requirements. I'd like to loosen neighborhood code where it makes sense to facilitate development, but I want to do so in a way that's not displacing folks and making sure that tenant protections are in place and that we can really have mixed-use neighborhoods that cater to a wide variety of socioeconomic backgrounds. Really, you know, my parents were renters until I was in high school and I grew up in very diverse, lower socioeconomic-class communities. And so, for me, I want everyone to thrive together alongside one another and not kind of sequestered into pockets of privilege in different parts of the city, kind of living away from each other, but rather integrated fully into one community.
Jen. Kathy?
Yes. I too support funding the Housing Trust, highly funding it at the moment because I really think that it's subsidized housing is the homeless, is what the homeless population needs. So, that is the first thing that I would hope we could look at to get that housing funded. We also need to build more really affordable housing. Having lived in Germany and most of that time was in rental, because in Europe, most people only rent. And there are many different types of housing mixed into a very close area. And I think we here are so used to having big yards. That can't happen anymore if we're going to house everyone. I think also for the homeless population in this city, we need to do more at the moment. Communication with them is imperative, that we actually, as city councillors, talk to the homeless, find out what they need. But I also think that this city needs to put far more public restrooms, heating and cooling facilities, so that people aren't dying out there in the winter. Thank you.
Thanks. Our first environmental question has to do with Burlington's Climate Action Plan. And Kathy, you'll start with this one. One of the key goals identified in Burlington's Climate Action Plan is to increase energy efficiency in buildings. The heating and cooling of Vermont's buildings is the second-largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the state. So, achieving this goal in Burlington would greatly reduce the emissions of the state as a whole. This goal has been challenging for the city to achieve due to limited green workforce and a backlog of projects. As weatherization and energy efficiency are undeniably effective in reducing our energy consumption and therefore our greenhouse gas emissions, how do you plan to address this issue during your time on the council? First to you, Kathy.
Okay. I, I think that we need to mandate that landlords weatherize. And if they're not going to do it in a permanent way, which I've seen often in these, in town, that people are living with plastic on their windows, that they yearly do it. And they must, they must, or we must, find more people to do court enforcement and make sure that the fines for not doing this are high, high enough to make them do it. Because we don't, we don't check out what is going on in many of these apartments. So, that's where I --
Thanks. Same issue, weatherization and the Climate Action Plan. To you, Jen.
So, I think that one thing that Burlington hasn't really done yet is decarbonize its own municipal buildings. So, it seems that if we're going to set the example that other, other housing structures and other buildings are going to meet that goal, we need to get our own house in order. So, I think that the city needs to move forward on that particular element. I also support expanding weatherization programs to be more both affordable and accessible to people of all socioeconomic classes, including lower-income folks and renters. And when I was knocking on doors as part of my campaign, you know, I chatted with a resident, a renter, who said, "I really want to get a weatherization audit, but it's $400 and I don't think my landlord will cover it." So, we need to think about other ways, especially for renters. I mean, in the city, we have about, you know, it's over 60% renters. So, I think that we need to think of ways that are going to make these kinds of climate strategies actually accessible to more people in the community, because otherwise, we're not going to be able to enact these policies in a way that really lets us meet, reach our goals.
Thanks. And Ally?
I think weatherization, I hope, sorry, that was loud, is a really important topic. To me, I consider it a really low-hanging fruit from both in a, what it, what it does from an environmental standpoint, as well as reducing our utility costs, has affordability benefits as well. And I think you named this in the question and I think it's really important that right now, we actually are struggling with the workforce to deliver on the weatherization standards that have been set by the city. And so, the city is working. It's a cross-departmental effort to help with, help train a workforce that can help us both with our weatherization audits and then the weatherization work. So, I think that that's extremely important. I think it's important to hold landlords absolutely responsible for weatherizing their units. I, I think this is an absolute top priority, as well as making weatherization available to all Burlington residents. I really support the incentive opportunities that Burlington Electric's been putting forward around both weatherizing homes and also transitioning to more sustainable energy and cooling systems, especially scaling those incentives depending on income level. I think these are all incredibly important steps to be taking to help us deliver on our net-zero energy roadmap and also just sort of be the city that we want to be at the forefront of climate action.
Thank you, candidates. Oh, sorry, that was loud. Last month, the Burlington City Council voted to abolish the hiring cap on the Burlington Police Department, which had limited the city, and I believe this figure is right, to 87 or fewer officers since 2020. Do you agree with the council's decision to abolish the cap and how would you have voted, preferably with a yes or no answer? Starting with Jen.
I would have supported Mayor Mulvaney Stanek's decision to, to not veto that vote and to, to support it. I think that this has been an issue that has been relitigated over and over for the past several years. And from what I have seen is that no one is changing their position on whether or not that 2020 vote should have happened. Everyone's kind of has their line in the sand on that issue. What I do know is that there is bipartisan support on council to move forward with recruiting, training, and retaining officers. Everyone acknowledges that this is an issue, this is an issue that's been, that has gone back to well before that 2020 vote. It was even documented in an extensive seven-days article in 2019. And so, there, I think that what we need to do now is move forward with this. We need to identify what the challenges are to recruitment and retaining. And retention is a really key piece that we don't speak about a lot. In the recent BPOA survey, there were a lot of issues that Rankin File spoke about that makes their job difficult, makes living in Burlington quite difficult. So, I think that we need to move forward on things that we can all agree on, that we can actually make clear movement on, and that we can really just do a bipartisan push. And I think that that's the right move and I think that this is in support of an entire community safety strategy in which we have a functioning police department, a functioning fire department, mental health practitioners, social workers, treatment providers, who are all working towards the same goal and supporting one another.
Thank you, Ally. Kathy?
Okay.
Ally, have you, sorry, I zoned out.
Ally?
Ally, it's your turn.
You know, as, as Jen named, we have a significant shortage of police officers in this community. And so, in that sense, I really support the work that we've been doing around bringing in community support officers and community support liaisons. And I do support removing the cap on sworn officers as well. At this point, I think we're so far below even what the cap had been set at. It would have taken us many years to reach that cap, let alone surpass that cap, if it would even be possible. So, I mean, hopefully, one day it's possible, maybe, but we're nowhere near it. So, I support the cap as a symbolic, removing the cap as a symbolic move to work to rebuild, rebuild our police department, help with recruitment and retention of officers. It was something that had been asked for by the, by the police department and I, I think, given sort of, that at this point, it's a very symbolic move, to me, it felt like an important step in working towards rebuilding trust and building, rebuilding a fully-staffed department.
Thank you, Ally. Kathy?
I too would probably have supported removing the cap at the time, but it's, it is a moot point. Nowhere in this country do they have sufficient police in any force in any city. So, I'm happy that we have a new police chief that is coming in. Office, the Rankin File officer seem to be very excited that he is coming. And I think that, you know, the biggest concern that the police department was lack of trust and support with management. So, I think that, at least at the moment, it is looking up for the police force and who is leading them at, at this moment. It will increase morale and cooperation with the mayor. And I, I fully support the police chief and officers and hope they will support the CSOs and CLOs that work in place to continue the work with drug and mentally ill people in our city.
Thanks. The McNeil biomass plant uses wood to produce electricity and is accountable for around 35% of the electrical needs of our city. Consequently, this plant is also the largest stationary source of greenhouse gas emissions in the state of Vermont, according to the Environmental Protection Agency. Starting with you, Kathy, what do you see for the future of the McNeil plant?
Oh. Well, I don't see much of a future with McNeil. I, I actually think it's a 40-year-old plant that needs to be decommissioned. And I think the city has to start really looking at alternative sources. The health hazards that are associated with the fine particulate matter that come from the stacks at McNeil have increased asthma with young children and COPD, which is the result of, of long-term asthma, or can be, is, is getting younger instead of what we think here of that being a disease of older people. So, I hope, and the worst part of this is, is that this, these numbers that are going, that are so high among young children are happening within a one-mile radius of this plant, which means it's hitting our most vulnerable population, the Old North End and of Burlington and Winuski. So, I do think that we, as soon as possible, and we can't put this on the back burner, we need to start looking, decommissioning it and alternatives to it.
Next to you, Jen, your view of the future of, of McNeil.
What I say about McNeil is that it's a classic case of, we have it, so it's hard for us to pivot to something new or something different. We want to work with what we have. And I think that it's a very outdated plant. Like Kathy said, it is something that's reached the end of its natural life. And so, we have a moment right now, which is, do we want to kind of plug the holes and bandage it up and keep it chugging along? Or do we lean into what we know as effective and clean energy sources and new technologies and move forward to a better thing, to a better strategy that is good for climate, good for health, good for equity? So, I'm a climate change and health researcher. I do a lot of work in how to build local climate resilience in a way that maximizes health and equity for all people. As Kathy mentioned, the scientific and medical evidence about fine particulate matter, which is what comes out of burning wood chips and burning wood matter, is extremely dangerous at all levels. Actually, there is substantial documented evidence of this in all of the body systems at all ages. And there's no way of removing the particulate matter from the smoked stack. It's just a function of it. And it is located, you know, very close. It's right there in the Old North End. My, my young children go to school at Integrated Arts Academy, which is right down the road. And we just, you know, McNeil is not needed, it's not needed to keep our lights on. It only operates at capacity, about 30% capacity. You know, we don't, we don't need it to move forward. So, I support looking to phase that out in a just way and looking for better and cleaner energy sources.
And Ally, your view of the future of McNeil?
I also echo that I think a long-term transition away from McNeil is necessary. You know, I, it is certainly, there are very real environmental concerns. You know, I'm a mom of a kid with asthma, so this is very real for me. I will say that I've been trying to learn more. I think there are some studies out there that have shown that it's hard to really draw that link, but nonetheless, the health effects of having particulates being emitted in our city are, are real and are worth, are worthy of our long-term plan to move away from. I think there's very real considerations to make around when and how quickly to transition away from McNeil. It requires that we make some very real investments that we don't have today in renewable energy storage options. If we were to be able to transition away from McNeil and transition to renewable sources like solar and wind, we don't have the storage capacity today to be able to make that work for our city, which would mean that we would be increasingly reliant on, on other fossil fuel sources of energy if we were to do away with McNeil today, which not only has its own sort of fossil fuel and environmental concerns, but also has real cost concerns, because the cost of natural gas and oil is much more volatile depending on the market than the locally sourced wood that McNeil burns. So, it actually provides quite a bit of affordability around energy costs in our community, which is not, to me, a reason to, to keep it. It does need to be phased out, but it is one of many considerations of when and how quickly we do move away from it.
Thank you, candidates. Starting with Jen. Last year, the city council voted to exclude and quote apartheid-free community ballot leisure from the town meeting day ballot. This measure would have asked Burlington voters if they believed the city should officially state opposition to quote Israel's apartheid regime. Would you support including this measure on town meeting day ballots in future years? Let me be clear, I'm not asking if you would vote for it, just whether or not it should be included as a ballot measure, preferably with a yes or no. Starting with Jen.
If the ballot item meets the criteria that's needed to get on the ballot, so if it gets the requisite signatures, the wording of the ballot item meets the criteria and doesn't get the city in any legal trouble, for example, and, you know, all the submission stuff goes according to the rules, then yes, I support it being on the ballot measure. This is an issue of local democracy. This ballot measure has come up now a few times and keeps getting declined despite the fact that there seems to be widespread community support for this item. And I, and I completely understand that this is a very contentious issue. I also support, I think that there needs a lot, there needs to be a lot of local dialogue about this, because obviously, this is not going to change anything of the situation in the Middle East. But I'm also aware that members of the community are looking for ways to express a moral outrage about what's happening. And that's a really important community need that should also be acknowledged here, particularly at a time when there are so many things going on in the world that we just feel so futile and we feel so overwhelmed by. And I think community members, again, coming together to have a moral voice, a sense of moral outrage about what is happening in Gaza, is understandable and is within the purview of a community to, to signify this if they want.
Thank you, Jen. Ally?
Yeah, thanks so much for this important question. I'm, I'm going to answer it slightly differently and say that I've answered this question a couple times. And if you visit the Issues page of my website, you can, you can hear my answer on this. But I wanted to, to take a moment to make a plea to all of us here in the room today and share a little bit about my background and my perspective on this. You will never hear me justify in any way the violence or the long history of conflict in that region. I'm horrified by Netanyahu and his right-wing regime. I'm horrified by, by what's, why Hamas's attack on October 7th and all of the violence that's, and the absolute destruction that's come before us. What you're always going to hear me stand for and defend is our shared humanity. And I think a lot about Representative Becca Ballant, who, to me, is a hero at the federal level right now, fighting what's happening with Trump. And she has this incredible ad that she ran in her race that said, "The way to bring about change is to turn towards each other." And I think that this issue, in so many ways, has been dividing our community. And my plea to all of us in this room, and may this echo out beyond the walls of this room, is that let's find ways to have this issue bring us together in community. We are up against such tremendously scary things happening at the federal level. We need each other in this community. And so, my plea to all of us, all of you, is that we should
in this community. And so my plea to all of us is to channel Becca Ballant and say, "Change happens when we turn towards each other." And my hope is that we can really embody that on the city council and model that as a community, so that that sort of peace can ripple out beyond. I also want to put in a plug that there's some incredible peace work happening, and there's some information in this room. It's called the Phoenix Plan, a plan co-developed by Jewish and Palestinian kids, Israeli kids, Palestinian, Muslim, Christian over a decade, that I would highly recommend. You can come to me after. I'm happy to share information. It's really important work.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes. I think, as many know, I did support having the petition put on the ballot. And I feel, as you both have said, that it's part of a democracy, that if they have collected the signatures, which they did both times, then it should have been on. And I know much of the rhetoric around it, that we were endangering Jews in this community. And I have to say that I truly feel that not allowing this on the ballot probably made more problems than had we let people vote on it. So I don't condone what goes on in the Middle East. I am totally against genocide, and I feel that is what's going on. But I think that also, we as Americans have a lot of skin in that game, because it is our tax dollars that are paying for that war in the Middle East, and it has to stop. So I am against apartheid, and, okay, I'll end there.
Thank you. Our next environmental question. The Air National Guard employs over 1,000 people in Vermont, nearly seventy-five percent of whom live here in Vermont. Consequently, the National Guard is responsible for the F-35 fighter planes, which routinely fly over Burlington, producing noise pollution and significant greenhouse gas emissions. What is your stance on this issue? Starting with Allie?
Yeah, can you talk into, I can't hear you.
I'll repeat it.
It's there.
The Air National Guard employs over 1,000 people in Vermont, nearly seventy-five percent of whom live in Vermont. The National Guard is responsible for the F-35 fighter planes, which routinely fly over Burlington, producing noise pollution and significant greenhouse gas emissions. What is your stance on this issue? Starting with Allie?
Okay. I have from the very beginning--
I think I'm the first.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. Yeah, so there's also on my website, on the issues page, you can find a questionnaire that all of us have answered on this important issue. You know, I think particularly living in the East District, I often have, when I was working remotely from home, I would often have to mute my Zoom calls when the planes flew overhead. It's very loud, and I have my own, I have concerns about them. I don't enjoy their presence at all in our community. And, you know, but also, it is sort of only, the only thing city council can do today is really advocate to our federal delegation to explore whether or not there's a different mission for the F-35s. And so if it were determined that my constituents asked that of me, to make that request to our federal delegation, I would, I would. And, you know, I personally have my own concerns and feelings about them as well. So I, you know, don't love having them fly overhead. And I particularly think about the impact on my kids when we're out in the backyard playing and we all have to stop to hear them fly overhead.
Next to Jen.
Oh, sorry, Jen. Okay, I'm sorry. Again, so I'm someone with a public health background, and I do research on health impacts. And I am very concerned about just the health and equity impacts of the F-35s in the sense of the communities in Burlington that suffer the most from this tend to be, you know, lower income or middle class. I do think that if this was a neighborhood that was higher income, I think that we would be having probably different conversations about that. I think in terms of when we think about emissions and we think about climate change policies and so forth, thinking about the emissions of the F-35s. And, you know, so I understand that part of that is going to be the jobs of the, you know, the Air National Guard. But there are also economic impacts for people who lose their homes or their home values go down. There are health impacts for people who have to, you know, listen to this and the effect that it can have on your hearing. And I think that we need to consider all options and to try to make sure that the benefits and burdens of these policies are equitably shared by all in our community. In this particular case, I feel that some community members are not being considered in an equitable way. And so I support more work to remediate that problem.
And next to Kathy.
Yes. I am against and have been against the stationing of the F-35s here since the beginning. They are not planes that actually should be allowed to be in a community because of the loud noises. We know that. The National Guard actually, some people in the National Guard have actually said that it's against their, where they would station it to have it here, because we are so close. And I have been in Winuski when those planes go over, and it is horrendous. And to think that someone is living there constantly and children are trying to go to school with these loud, loud noises is outrageous. So I do think they need to be stationed somewhere else. I know that National Guardsmen, many of them have been here. We haven't gotten that many more since we stationed the F-35. So I would hope getting rid of the F-35s is not going to take away a lot of jobs of people that are working for the National Guard.
If the audience could please silence their cell phones. Thank you, Kathy. And can you hear me all right? Is this good?
Yeah.
According to recent data, the average rent in Burlington is thirty-two percent above the national average. I know many students, myself here at UVM, who are paying high rent costs just to live in unsafe conditions. In the immortal words of Jimmy McMillan, "The rent is too damn high." The question here is simple. What are you going to do to lower the rent? Kathy?
Well, I am in favor of rent stabilization or capping rents. I think that at this point, the rents in this city have gotten to be so high that they're, you know, people can't pay them. And I also think that we have to look at what is rented and for these exorbitant prices, because I think that many, especially students, are living in substandard housing and paying outrageous amounts of money. So I would be in favor of putting a cap on rents in this city. And the other thing is that we have to really start building more buildings with affordable housing, and I mean, really affordable housing.
Thank you, Kathy. Allie?
Well, I agree. The rent is too damn high. It's absolutely true. You know, we have a couple of issues happening in the city right now. We absolutely need to be making sure that there are strong standards for rental properties in place, that if you are paying such damn high rent, that you're getting quality housing for it. That's critical. Absolutely. It's a basic human right. We have consistent supply shortages here in this city right now. So, you know, Economics 101, when demand goes up and there isn't enough supply to meet it, it pushes prices up. And so I do think that one of the ways we need to address the cost of housing here and the high rents is figuring out where and how we can add more supply to our housing market. One of the ways that we can do that, one of my top priorities, will be working closely with UVM to execute on the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, that's long been in the works, and that we almost got over the finish line last year but wasn't quite completed. So how can we be working with UVM to build more on-campus student housing that will immediately relieve some of the housing crisis that we have in the East District, which would ultimately also help with rent prices? So, yeah, I'm at times. So, but yes, I think that addressing our supply shortages, holding landlords accountable to high rental standards, also minimizing continued increases on the residential tax base. We continue to increase residential taxes here, which both impacts homeowners and renters.
Jen?
I think that to address the housing affordability issues in Burlington, we need to do three things, which is we need regulatory reform to protect tenants from displacement, from exorbitantly high rent, from gentrification. We need to increase the supply of housing quickly, which does mean that we are going to need density in parts of the city. And this is not a bad thing. We can build buildings that have good community, and buildings can actually have a smaller, excuse me, a smaller climate footprint, which is actually better for the community. And we also need infrastructure investments in the city, because right now, those are typically underneath, historically, municipalities are supposed to be responsible for infrastructure. We haven't been doing as well at that, so developers have to take that on, things like electricity, water, sewage, and that increases the cost of development, which can both lead to higher rents or just prevent developers from developing at all. So, you know, so the upcoming water and lake bonds and the general obligation bonds on Town Meeting Day, I do support those, because those are really crucial investments in the city that will allow us to grow and to build more housing, to increase the grand list, to increase tax revenue for a lot of services that we really need in the city. So we need to grow and we need to embrace it.
Thanks, candidates. The next environmental question returns to this issue of energy and the McNeil plant. In November of 2023, the city council voted in favor of the district energy plan, which approved the investment of $42 million into the extension of the McNeil plant and the divertment of excess steam to the UVM Medical Center. Two years later, there is seemingly no progress on this plan. What is your opinion on this matter? Do you think the district energy plan is a smart financial and environmental decision for our city? Starting with Jen.
Is your question, do I support the plan for steam?
It's your opinion on this, on the district energy plan and whether you think the divertment of excess steam to the UVM Medical Center, which is a part of that, is a smart financial and environmental decision for the city?
Yeah. I don't know that this is the best decision in the sense that, I mean, the reason that the steam plan came into, just even became an idea, was quite a long time ago when McNeil was found to lose a lot of its energy. So people were trying to figure out, how can you use that energy loss? How can you mitigate it? And so then the steam idea came up with UVM. But again, this was a long time ago before we knew the climate impacts of burning wood, before we knew about the extensive health impacts of fine particulate matter. So again, if we're investing in this piece with UVMMC, that would require the McNeil plant to continue operating, which, as we just previously discussed, there's a lot of issues with that. So I think that we need to be more creative in how we think of the energy needs and how we can meet those needs. And it's not clear to me that piping steam from McNeil to UVMMC is the best idea that we can come up with. And I would like to see more independent studies of this, trying to figure out how do we get better and cleaner energy options. And also, just my understanding also, is that even piping the steam from the McNeil location to UVMMC, that even that plan is going to lose a lot of energy just through the piping. So again, this isn't a perfect solution. It's a little bit of a patchwork solution based on old needs. And I just think we need to update and we need to think more creatively about what our long-term future with energy needs are going to be.
Thanks. Next to Kathy.
I, too, am against the district energy plan. I find that it, in order to get enough steam to go up that hill and to the hospital, we would need to burn a lot more wood than we're already burning right now. And we would also need to be using more natural gas. Both things are not good for the environment. That would also make the particulate matter higher that is coming out of those stacks. So that, too, would exacerbate the health issues from McNeil. And so I'm against it for all of those reasons. And I think, too, we have to really start looking at some different way, but we need to close McNeil.
Thanks. Now to you, Allie.
Yeah, I'm not totally sure why there's been so little movement on this in the last two years. Like Jen, I would like to better understand the intention behind this plan and what we think it's ultimately going to solve. So my understanding is, it will require us to build about two miles of piping from McNeil to the hospital. So that in and of itself is a pretty significant undertaking. It will, my understanding is, because it will use excess steam from McNeil, we may need to add a little bit more energy creation from McNeil to fully live into it, but I don't think it's that significant. There will be significant decrease in natural gas usage at the hospital. So I think it's really worth, I need to better understand it to really be able to say yes or no, should we move forward. It is definitely delayed. It also, we could continue to use that steam piping even if we discontinue use of McNeil. So we could have other ways to generate the energy that would be coming from that and then the steam that would be piped into the hospital. So it does have the potential to significantly improve the emissions of what the hospitals, of the hospital's energy usage. So I certainly want to learn more and better understand it, but, you know, it certainly comes with, it's a quite complicated undertaking.
Thank you. We've covered a lot of this question, so I'm going to abbreviate it. And if you could please answer with a one-word or one-sentence response. Do you support just cause eviction rules to regulate when and how a landlord can evict a tenant? Starting with Allie.
Yes.
Jen?
Absolutely.
Kathy?
Yes.
Well, it wasn't that swell. So it's undeniable that Vermonters are facing the devastating consequences of climate change, from historic flooding to cyanobacteria ravaging our beloved lake, to the unpredictable and extreme temperature and weather fluctuations. Do you think Burlington could be doing more to address climate change? And if so, what specifically? Starting with Jen.
So like I said before, I'm someone who works in climate change and health research, and a big part of this is looking at how local communities can build climate resilience in ways that maximize health and equity for all in the community, especially vulnerable groups. And this is really important, because as he mentioned, you know, the climate change impacts are already here, and they're going to be here no matter what we do to reduce our carbon footprint and fossil fuel use. We are still going to get those impacts, and they're going to affect our well-being, our economy, and our health, and we need to be prepared for those. We need to be thinking about those. So I would bring a unique lens to city council in this sense, given that this is an area that I work in. And part of that work is also working with civic leaders and policymakers and how to communicate these things to the public. In terms of what Burlington can be doing, so for example, I mentioned the lake and water bonds earlier. I think that we need to be looking at our infrastructure improvements, because the stormwater infrastructure is really affected by things like flooding. And as we can see, you know, we've had two years of back-to-back devastating floods. So thinking ahead about how our infrastructure, our water infrastructure, our energy infrastructure, et cetera, can withstand these impacts and what kinds of upgrades or what kinds of preparations we need. And also thinking through what the health impacts are more and making sure that our health services and the health system at UVMMC are prepared for these impacts when people come to the hospital due to heat waves and heat-related illness, due to wildfire smoke-related illnesses, making sure that healthcare providers are educated on these and are able to provide the care that people need.
Thanks. Next to Kathy. Do you think Burlington could be doing more to address climate change? And if so, what specifically?
Yes, I do. Having been on the school board for six years, in the last three or two that I was on there, we were dealing with VHS and having to build a new high school. And I think that this will be a shining star for this city, because we are building the school using geothermal to heat it. using geothermal to heat it. We will have no gas in, in the school. And I think these are the kind of things we have to really mandate that when we build new buildings, especially ones that are city-owned, that they have all of this built in. And it's possible. We can, we can do it. We're doing it right now. So I, I, that runoff naturally to the lake is something that worries me and we have to do more on. And looking at renewable energy, as we have been talking about, because we can't continue with what we're doing. Green infrastructure, green roofs, there's, there's many, many different things that we can do and need to start doing. Thank you.
Last to Ally. Is there anything Burlington could be doing more to address climate change? And if so, what?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you know, I'm very proud to live in Burlington for many reasons. One of them is that I think we have the most ambitious net-zero energy roadmap of any city in the country. So, you know, on the, I really commend what we have been doing. But of course, I think there are many things that we can also be doing more of. Just because we are on the cutting edge doesn't mean that we should slow down or stop the really important work that's happening. I think there's many steps we can take. We have taken some pretty ambitious. We have a new carbon fee. All new construction, no matter whether it's residential or large commercial buildings, is subject to using renewable energy sources in its construction. I think that's fantastic. I want to see us continue to improve our walkability and our bikeability and make really sound investments in Green Mountain Transit, our public transportation system, so that we have non-single-use car, gas-powered car options for transportation that are safe and reliable. So I think those are really important things for us to do as a city. I also think that on the ballot this year, you're going to see, for Town Meeting Day, you're going to see an important bond question around upgrading our sewer system, which will have really real impacts on our ability to regulate the runoff and the phosphorus that enters our lake and causes the cyanoblooms. So I think there's a lot more we do need to be doing as a city, while I also commend us for the great work we've done.
Thank you, Ally. In view of the immense property tax increases last year, Governor Phil Scott has recently released a plan to restructure and reform the state's education system, which would create a, quote, "school choice lottery system" and vastly simplify Vermont's systems of school districts. Do you support the governor's proposal? Do you think it would be good for Burlington? And what are your thoughts on school choice in general? Starting with Kathy.
Well, I do not support the governor's. It is, I find that he is dismantling the public education system in this state. I find it scary. Having five school districts, which Champlain would be ours, is the largest, with 34,000 students in it. And the other four are out in rural areas with 10,000 to 15,000 students in them. We just have to think about how long those kids are going to be in buses, being bussed in such huge areas. That is certainly not good for the environment, but it's also really not good for kids. They are not going to save on administration costs. Many, I've, I've seen a study done, I think it was Oklahoma where they did this. And the kids, the, you can't have such large districts with such few, with one superintendent to it because there's so many different buildings. So they have actually then had to hire more people. It was not a savings. In the end, I think they only saved 1% of the budget. And he also wants to get rid of the formula. And this is a formula that we, on the Burlington School Board, worked for two or three years to get through. It has been chosen, it has been seen to be one of the most egalitarian funding sources of any in the US. We need to keep it and not go back to the base.
Thank you, Kathy. Ally?
I too have concerns about the governor's proposal. I think it would significantly, just completely here in Burlington, have a very significant and very likely not ideal, not good, impact on our public education system. As co-chair of the PTO of my kid's school, I was recently able to talk with and hear from some of our school, the school administrators about this plan. And I'm following it closely and really committed to advocating with our state delegation at the, at the state level to really make sure that Burlington schools are protected, given that the governor's proposal and the potential impact it might have on our schools. I share Kathy's deep commitment to wanting to make sure that this new weighted student formula that the state has implemented in recent years, which has a very real and important impact on our student population here in Burlington, that this weighted student, this weighted pupil formula is also protected as part of whatever education reform efforts are undertaken at the state level. We have such a magnificent and unique community here in Burlington with a lot of low-income families, a lot of new American families. And we need to be able to fully invest in the services and supports for our students to succeed. And so I really, I share Kathy's concerns and feel really committed as a counselor to doing what I can with our state delegation to protect our schools.
Thank you, Ally. Jen?
I don't support the governor's plan. I was also at the same meeting that Ally just spoke about, given that I'm a part of my daughter's school's PTO with school administrators. And some things really jumped out at me at this meeting as really big alarm bells. One being that they, they described this as being a state takeover of education at a scale never before seen. And it was a very opaque process that a lot of people don't really understand what the reasoning is behind it, what best practices, if any, or what data are being used for these decisions. So for example, with the, with the example that Kathy just gave about school districts, best practices show that for a district to be cost-effective and good for educational outcomes, you need about 2,000 to 4,000 students. These, splitting up the state into five districts is substantially more than that. So no one's really clear, what is that based on? What kind of reasoning? Is it actually in the best interest of our kids? And also, 80% of Vermont children are public school students. I was a public school student my entire life. My daughters are. I'm very proud of this. And school choice leads to school segregation. Public dollars belong in public schools, and I very strongly support that. So I do find the governor's plan to be very troubling. I think that we need substantially more information. I think that we are all going to have to engage with our state legislators to make sure that our voices are heard. And I think that that phase is coming up very quickly because this may is when actual laws are going to be passed on this issue. And also in terms of the foundational formula that they're now trying to use, you know, it's not clear to what extent equity is going to be prioritized in that formula, where it is in the weighted formula that we are currently using. And so I want to see that protected as well.
Thanks, candidates. A significant issue impacting the quality of the health of Lake Champlain is caused by runoff and wastewater discharge during high precipitation events. This is something that a couple of you have brought up already tonight. When Burlington sewer systems are overwhelmed with stormwaters, they are designed to discharge into the lake. This includes untreated sewage and harmful chemicals. We'll pose this question first to Ally. How do you propose the city could best address this public health and environmental concern?
Of the runoff in the lake?
Of the runoff and the combined sewer overflows and the pollution that results.
Yeah, well, I think that the ballot item that we have on this year's ballot is really important. So that being, if you haven't yet voted, I would encourage you to strongly consider voting yes for the bond question with the lake, about the lake bond, to be able to make really important and critical upgrades to our wastewater treatment. So I think that's one really important step that the city can and should take to address the runoff in the lake and the pollution that enters our lake. I also would like to see, and as a city councilor, I'd be really committed to figuring out ways that on an ongoing basis, on an annual basis, we can be making sure that we're investing in this critical maintenance so that we're not finding ourselves in the situation we're in today where we have this one-time, really significant investment on the ballot, that ideally these costs would be spread out over multiple years and, and built into our annual budget and how we really are, so that we're always planning ahead to protect the well-being of our lake and our environment and our community. And so, you know, we don't have enough resources right now to be doing that on an annual basis. And I would like to make sure that we do think about, how can we constantly be building this into our work? And this is also a long game, I will say. Like, it will take us decades to even decrease the, the amount of runoff that's going in today, even with important upgrades that we're making. So, yeah, I think we, we just have to keep up this important work, protect our lake.
Same question to you, Kathy. How do you propose the city could best address public health and environmental concerns associated with stormwater runoff and sewage overflows?
Well, I too support the bond that's on the ballot this year. I, I think it's very important that we pass that because that is the biggest amount of cleaning up what our sewage systems lack. But I, I also think that, that we need to look at permeable surfaces. And building more or making more parking garages, things like that, paving over is earth, will naturally filter some of this if we would let it, the runoff. But having, I, I think we have to be very careful with what's going on in our city besides this sewage plant, which, and making sure that we are not letting all sorts of, I don't, you know, bad water and, I, I can't think of what I want, the word I want to use. But I, I think we have to be careful about getting, putting too much asphalt and too much, too many buildings. We have to have open spaces that will let the water filter through.
Thanks, Kathy. Same question to you, Jen.
So I've already indicated in my prior answer that I support the, the lake and the water bonds, partially for this reason, because this is a part of climate resilience and environmental resilience that the city really needs. Though, like Ally said, this is a really big issue that is beyond simply the sewage runoff and, and the stormwater runoff. And that is because agricultural runoff is also a big part of the phosphorus issues in the lake. And what we're seeing with toxic algae blooms, for example, right now, is kind of a, it's like a two-part factor where we have increased rains from climate change, so just precipitation anomalies, which is increasing agricultural runoff, and then high temperatures, which is creating the growth of the toxic algae blooms, right? So of course, the stormwater upgrades are going to be a really important piece of that, but it's not by any means the entire piece. And, you know, Lake Champlain is a really big lake. The agricultural lands around it are substantial. So, you know, just Burlington is facing a lot of issues right now that are not only Burlington-specific. They really connect to a lot of different places. And so what I support is, I know the City Council's a municipal body. I support councilors having more, more collaborative and bidirectional relationships with state legislators and other state-level stakeholders because we need conversations that extend beyond our boundaries. And we need to be really future-looking in terms of thinking about what we need to do to secure the health of our lake in the long term.
Thank you, Jen. Last summer, the legislature voted to override Governor Scott's veto of an overdose prevention center in Burlington. For our audience, an overdose prevention center are places where people can safely use previously obtained drugs under the supervision of trained staff. Do you support opening an overdose prevention center in Burlington? How would you address the opioid epidemic? And do you think the city is doing enough to control public drug use? This question starts with Jen.
As a public health researcher, I very strongly support the opening of an overdose prevention center. I understand that the idea of this may be very new for Burlingtonians and even for Americans. But there are about 200 OPCs opened throughout the world in 14 countries. They've been around since the 80s. There's actually a substantial body of research that looks at them, that looks at their effectiveness in terms of getting people into treatment, saving lives, and even looking at the cost-effectiveness of them in terms of a use of public dollars and looking even at crime and at public disorder on the boundaries of OPCs. And there was actually a really big study that just came out, I think last year, from Brown University researchers looking at, you know, PC, two OPCs that are in New York City. One of them is in Harlem, right across the street from a school, actually. And they did a lot of research looking at 911 and 311 calls, talking to the police department, talking to community members about what their experience with the OPC has been like. And it was actually quite positive. They did not see an increase in 911 or 311 calls. Police officers were generally very supportive of it. And even community members said that they've seen a, you know, going down things like public drug use and loitering, which is something that you see a lot of people complain about here in downtown Burlington. So an OPC, I think, would actually be a really great move for our city. It's going to save lives. It creates a safe space to get people into treatment. It's documented to be cost-effective. And it might actually help address some of the issues downtown that we all are really struggling to see.
Thank you, Jen. Ally?
I do support the opening of an overdose prevention center. You know, anything that can help save lives, I think, is a really important, you know, thing for the city to strongly consider. I think there are a couple, like, important sort of sub-points that I want to make about this. One is that it's not yet been determined exactly where this would be located or even how it would be fully resourced and staffed in the long term. The funding behind being able to open the overdose prevention center is a one-time source of funding. So I think it's really important that if and when we do open this, that we have a plan in place plan in place for the long-term staffing and support of the center, and also that we have a transparent and open process with the community to determine the best place for it to be located. So, those are two things I'd really, as a councillor, want to make sure we've done before we open the overdose prevention center. There's also the potential that with the new administration in place at the federal level, that we could potentially be open to legal risk if we do open the overdose prevention center. There's a case currently pending, so I think it's also just really important that we, as councillors, if I were to serve, just be monitoring that situation. I would not want to put us in jeopardy or put us in a potentially really vulnerable legal situation that could be quite bad for the city in a lot of ways if we opened it, but that's something that I would just want to make sure we monitor. I do very much support opening an overdose prevention center and the data that supports the importance of it.
Thank you, Ally. Kathy.
I also very much support an overdose prevention center. I think that, having worked in healthcare a long time ago, but also being married to a physician, I know what are the ancillary illnesses, if you want to say, that happen from not having someplace where there are health personnel around to make sure they're getting clean needles, they are, that they are watching them when they are dosing themselves, that they don't overdose and can do something right away. I think this will bring healthcare costs for all of us down, and as you've said, that, you know, I think also the fact that there won't be the needles all over town because they will be going to these sites and they will dispose of the needles there. So, we won't be having to maybe do needle cleanup in schoolyards and in parks. I also just think that these are human beings, that they have a problem, and we need to give them the health surroundings to deal with that problem. We, in this country, have not put the money into drug, oh, sorry.
Thanks, Kathy. This next question has to do with transportation in Burlington, and we will start with you, Kathy. Do you think our public transportation system is currently adequate in dealing with the needs of Burlington? What about walkability and bikeability?
Am I first?
You're first, Kathy, go ahead.
All right, can you say this again, the last part of it, but say it into the microphone?
Sure. Is the current transportation system in Burlington adequate? And we want to ask you about what you think about bikeability and walkability.
Okay. No, I don't think that the transportation is adequate in this city. If we really want to get people out of their cars and into public transportation, I think we need to have far more small buses that are electrified, and we need to also broaden where buses are, because there are many people that cannot get to a bus the way they are now. And if we really want to do that, to get people off of their automobiles, we need to broaden our system and really make it electric.
Thanks. Next, Jen, on transportation.
Jen, you think?
Yep.
So, yeah, I don't think that the public transportation is adequate in town. I think that Green Mountain Transit does a wonderful job trying their best. I know that this is a larger issue, again, than Burlington, but, you know, I was really worried when I saw GMT cutting back on routes, and I know that those were really hard decisions, that really bothered GMT as well, but that's really, I mean, fundamentally, it's going in the wrong direction for our city. You know, all, this is kind of the story of this country and of cities throughout, which is that, you know, we built around the needs of cars and highways and not the needs of people, and certainly not for bikers, walkers. And so, we've really kind of deprioritized public transportation all throughout the country, and I think that that's really a problem. I think as we look to the future of the city, I know, I mean, this is a pretty wide-held view, I think that a lot of us want the city to be more bikeable, to be more walkable, to be safe for that, and to be developed in that way. And certainly, public transportation just has to be a core element of that. As Kathy said, if we want people to be out of their cars and to be able to get around without using fossil fuels, we do need better public transit. And, you know, a lot of places in the world do this really well, there are a lot of models to look towards, and I just think that we need to set our sights, we need to set our sights bigger for our community.
Thanks, Jen. Now, Ally.
Yeah, I absolutely support a thriving multimodal transportation system where we have reliable and consistent access to public transportation as one of our main means of transportation. I agree that cutting routes for GMT is moving in the wrong direction, there's been significant financial considerations that went into those decisions, and I've been following some of what's happening to try to help make things more financially viable so that we can continue to grow and keep affordable our public transportation system. So, I'm supportive of any and all steps to make that happen. I also want to put in another plug for one of the ballot questions, which is upgrades to our core infrastructure in this community, that I think improving our roads and sidewalks is key to being able to improve the bikeability and walkability of our city, which I would also love to see. We need well-lit roads and sidewalks, we need safe bike lanes with plenty of space between oncoming cars and bikers. These are all things that I fully support, I think are incredibly important, and given what such a rural state we live in, it's quite a privilege here in Burlington to live in a community where, you know, I walk to work every day, and my family, we are proud one-car homeowners. Like, we really are able to shape our lives around being able to walk and bike places and use public transportation when needed, and I consider that a privilege, and I want to make sure that we, as a community, can continue to lean into that as much as possible.
Thank you, Ally. This is our last pre-planned question. With the recent election of President Donald Trump, many undocumented immigrants around the country have become increasingly concerned for their safety. Do you support the continuation of Burlington's status as a, quote, "sanctuary city" that refuses to actively cooperate with federal law enforcement when it comes to immigration? Starting with Ally.
I do, absolutely. I think one of the things that makes Burlington such a beautiful place to live is the vibrancy and diversity of our community. I love that we are a refugee resettlement community, we have so many incredible new American families in our community. The Sustainability Academy has a tremendously large population of people who have not lived in the United States or Vermont for very long, and as PTO president, I work really hard to make sure that they are able to be fully included in the happenings that we have going on at school. We recently implemented a new WhatsApp program where classes can communicate over WhatsApp because they have an automatic translation feature in our efforts to really make sure that we're not just using traditional methods of communication, like email or even just normal texting, but that we're doing it in a way where we can allow as many families to be fully, full participants in our community as possible. It's, I think it's such an important part of who we are as a community, and so I fully support every step that we can take as a city to make sure that everyone feels safe in our community, that everyone knows how welcome and important they are, and that we continue to be a refuge for everyone who lives here and calls Burlington home.
Thank you, Ally. Kathy.
Yes, I think that we need to have every possible safeguard for the non-documented in our midst. I, I think people, we are a sanctuary city, that means that we would help these people, and I think that we need to educate our normal populace what that means to be a sanctuary city, because I don't think that many of our populace understand that. I think, I know that, you know, schools are all locked, but does the personnel there know that they do not have to let ICE into the school? And that they don't have to abide by, that there are certain rules that they can abide by that have nothing, that will not stop, or that will stop ICE from coming in? We have many places here in the city that have lists of undocumented immigrants, we need to get rid of those lists. We cannot hold them, and because they are open to public scrutiny, I mean, you, as a public entity, can be asked for them, and you'd have to give them over. We need to get rid of them, and we need...
Thank you, Kathy. Jen.
Absolutely support Burlington's status as a sanctuary city, and I think that we need to stand firm right now moving forward. I mean, as we've seen, you know, the past few weeks have just been a flurry of so many things being thrown at us that are affecting many of our lives. For me personally, much of my public health and climate change research is funded by the National Institutes of Health and is actually being actively flagged. Some of my grants are on blacklists with the Trump administration right now, and funding is being held up. So, what my job's going to look like in a couple of years, I'm not even sure right now, so it's a really stressful time. And I mean, that's just, you know, job security. I mean, there are families in town who are sheltering in place right now, immigrant families, because they're afraid of being out in public, they're afraid of sending their children to school. This is unacceptable, and it's really a problem, and we need to, as a community, we need to stand together and stand firm with all members of our community, because, you know, as we should all know, if none of, if like, one person in our community isn't safe, none of us are safe. I mean, who knows who Trump will go after in the years ahead? And so, and I also just support, or I encourage folks in the room to, if you haven't already, to connect with Migrant Justice, who has a lot of connections with mutual aid groups in town, who are coming together to provide meals for the sheltering-in-place families, and I think that there are some groups of parents who are coming together to help walk kids to school, for parents who maybe are afraid of going outside of their homes right now, which is really good work from the community, I think.
Thank you, Jen. Well, thanks to you candidates and our beautiful audience, we have time for two audience questions. We were not able to get to every question, and we emphasized diversity of topics, but here we are, and 60 seconds, please, due to time. We spoke in pretty extensively about Burlington's housing crisis, but many claim that a monopoly on properties is a major contributing factor. Joe wants to know if you have received any major financial campaign contributions from any of Burlington landlord families? Yes or no, please? We don't have an order for this question, but we can just go that way and then this way, so Jen, please start.
I don't believe so. I am not familiar with all of the landlord families in Burlington. You know, the strategy that I took when I was fundraising for my campaign is that the majority, the overwhelming majority of my fundraising has actually been directly from me to people who know me and who can vouch for my character. Very, very little has been fundraised by the Progressive Party, it's mostly just me and the people who know me. And so, to my knowledge, that is the bulk of my fundraising dollars to date.
Thank you, Jen. Kathy.
No, I haven't, it's all private people, relatives, that have supported my campaign. I haven't taken any money from landlords.
Thank you, Kathy. Ally.
I haven't, to my knowledge, taken any money from some of our big residential family landlords, I'm not, I'm not sure. I do have, I know at least one family who has some commercial properties who have donated to my election, but...
We, we, excuse me, excuse me, interruptions will not be tolerated. Thank you. Ally. We have also touched on the topic of public transit and alternative modes of transit. Dan asks if you plan to create a dedicated and separated bike network throughout the city, and if so, what policies would you propose to implement this? And this time, we'll start with Ally.
Can you ask it one more time?
My apologies. We've touched on the subject of public transit and alternative modes of transit repeatedly in this discussion. Dan is asking if you plan to push for a dedicated and separated bike network throughout Burlington, and if so, how would you go about doing that? And that starts with you.
A dedicated and separated bike network?
Yes, so bike lanes, we're talking about bike lanes.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, absolutely. I fully support increasing our biking infrastructure, adding more bike lanes to our community, adding safer bike lanes, and, you know, building our city infrastructure sufficiently such that, yes, that we can accommodate biking more easily, I fully support that.
Excellent. Kathy.
Yes, I've lived in Germany for 13 years, and in many large cities in Europe, they have a higher curb that goes along to keep cars from going into the bike lane. They also have separate lights for bike lanes, so I really would support doing this, and I think that we just need, I know, Europe is often looked at as the old country, but we could learn a lot from Europe these days, especially in biking and biking and infrastructure, so yes, I would support that.
Thank you, Kathy. Jen.
Yes, I'm fully supportive of increased, improved bikeability in Burlington. And again, I mean, I've mentioned this before, you know, we have a lot of challenges in town right now, but there are also a lot of great opportunities and a lot of, you know, really exciting ways of thinking about our future as a town. And so, I think, just thinking creatively, looking ahead, thinking about what are the needs and desires of this community? So many of us bike. And, you know, actually, I never really biked as much until I moved to Burlington, so even the infrastructure that we have right now is great, and we need to build on that, and we need to, we need to lean in on the things that are good for our community, and again, set our sights higher about what's possible, and be creative, and be optimistic about the future.
Thank you, Jen. Well, sadly, we've reached the end of our lovely discussion. Now, we will have closing remarks, and each candidate will get two minutes this time, yay, and we have, we're once again returning to order. So, Kathy, take us away.
Yes, well, I'd like to thank all the groups that have put this together tonight for doing that, and all of you who came to listen. I've, I've lived in this city for 30 years, and I love this city. I've done a lot in my time living here, and I hope to be able to give you at least two, if not four, more years of my time, because I really want to support our mayor and see that she can have the support in the city council to get a lot of the things she's planned and is working on done. So, I hope you'll remember my name on the 4th, or if you do it, if you're already yet now voting, to see it, to vote on me. Anyway, take care and thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Ally.
I also want to thank the organizers for this debate. I know that it took, it was a lot of people and a lot of hands. I also want to give a shout-out to the timekeeper, because I feel like that was a lot of work, and you did a great job. My brain would be tired if I were you. But I just want to thank you all for showing up. I think that part of what makes Burlington so fantastic, obviously, I love this community, is that we're a university town, and the university plays a really big role in who we are, and you all, as the students in the room, play, are a really important part of the fabric of our community, so I encourage you to stay connected, continue to get involved, vote on Town Meeting Day next Tuesday, a week from today. And if you'd like to learn more about me, you can visit my website, allyforburlington.com, there's a lot of information on there, and I'd be delighted to sit down and talk further with any of you about a lot of the important topics that were raised tonight, and also share more with you about my vision for Burlington. I love this community, and I think our brighter days are ahead of us, and I bring a real commitment to just finding ways to work together, to be in community with each other, to protect our community from what's happening at the federal level and the actions of the Trump administration. I think we have so much to give and so much to offer, and it would be an honor to work with all of you to help shepherd in the next chapter of Burlington's story.
Thank you, Ally. Jen, close us off.
I just want to echo the thanks for everyone for organizing this, there are many groups involved, and Elaine, I know I've been in touch with you for weeks and weeks about the details of this, so thank you, so much work. And thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, you know, it's kind of a drizzly cold night, and so it's just really nice to see so many community faces and to kind of feel like we're a bit in conversation here with you. And on that note, you know, so we're about a week out from Town Meeting Day now, I have been outdoor-knocking most days the past eight weeks. I have knocked on, I think it's over 1,000 doors myself, in 80 residential streets in our district, so nearly our entire district. So, I've probably spoken with many of you here, but if you haven't spoken with me yet, and if you'd like to ask me questions and learn more about my campaign and what I stand for, I'm going to be having a couple of coffee hours this week on Wednesday and Friday, from 8 to 9 a.m., at Nomad Coffee on Wednesday, and Brio Coffee Works on Friday. I'm also available by phone, and I can just stop by your place and have a chat while I'm outdoor-knocking, because I'll be continuing to do that this week. It really matters a lot to me to connect with as many people as possible. We live in a small town like Burlington, it's great to be able to connect with our local politicians, and I mean, I've met so many people at doors who say, you know, no one's ever even really knocked on my door before, this is really cool that we can chat about these things. And so, I just think it's such a cool opportunity to do this, I'm really excited to be a first-time candidate running for city council, I would be honored to serve, and I really, I feel really good about Burlington. I love living here, I love rooting myself here, this is home, and it's where I'll be in the long term, and so, you know, offering what I can to our moment and contributing to our community is just a really meaningful thing. So, thank you for trying for that opportunity.
Well, before we go into our closing remarks, let me just say I want to thank each and every candidate for their participation, it means a lot. I want to thank our timekeeper for doing such an amazing job. I want to thank all the organizers of this event, and most of all, I would like to thank my co-moderator, Professor Brooks. And thank you all, thank you all for coming. Thank you, thank you very much. Take us away.
Hello, everyone, my name is Emma Townsend, and I'm one of the co-directors of the Climate Action Collective alongside Ashley Winter and our awesome timekeeper, Elena Fasulo. On behalf of all of our wonderful hosts, I just wanted to thank the audience for engaging in these critical conversations, CCTV for broadcasting this event, and the city council candidates for their attendance and insightful responses. We have highlighted a multitude of issues facing the Burlington community and have heard a very, a variety of perspectives. As March 4th rapidly approaches, we encourage you to continue this important dialogue, stay informed, and vote for the leadership and vision you think will best serve our community. Your vote is powerful. Please visit our voter registration table on the way out to seek more information. Thank you, everyone, once again for joining us tonight, and travel safe.